Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March 28th, 2023 New Bern Board of Alderman Meeting. If you would, please bow your heads for a word of prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you, dear Lord, for yet another day and opportunity as we gather here at the City Hall People's House to do the work of you and the city. We ask that you lead God and direct our conversations, our discussion, and our decisions. And, Lord, we also ask that you please touch those in Tennessee, those lives that perished yesterday during the school shooting. We ask these things in your name we pray. Amen. If you would please let stands for a pledge of our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, if you would, please call the roll.
Alderman Prill.
Here.
Alderman Royal.
Here.
Alderman Astor.
Here.
Mayor Odom.
Here.
Alderman Kinsey.
Here.
Alderman Best.
Present.
Alderman Brinson.
Here.
Okay, Board, if everyone has had an opportunity to look at the agenda, entertain a motion to approve it. Have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion to postpone item number 10 on the agenda. Given the information that the Board has received, I would ask that we have more time to understand the framework and the details. And I would so also like to ask that Swiss Bear would be available on April the 11th, our next meeting, to make a formal presentation to the Board of Alderman and include some of the specific details that's related to the partnerships that are outlined in the agenda packet, as well as the proposed capital campaign. Given the information that we just received when we walked into the room, it would allow us an opportunity to review the updated information that we have received, and it would allow for our citizens to have an opportunity.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Attorney, we had a motion in a second to approve the agenda as it was, and we've got some discussion about changing that. So if we were to change that, it would require those two individuals to pull their motion in second, correct?
I think, and maybe Alderman Royal can correct me, I think she made a subsidiary motion to postpone item number 10 to a date certain. Or is she asking, I think she said that I make a motion. Was that what you said?
Yes, to postpone.
So if we had a motion on the floor that had been seconded, we have to vote on that before we entertain a second motion, I believe.
I think Robert's rules allow you to entertain a subsidiary motion, considering that this one is to postpone an item to a date certain. However, if the pleasure of the Board is that the main motion continue, you certainly can do so.
I think to make this as clean as possible, because I don't know since I've been on the Board that we've ever done a subsidiary motion, I would like to entertain that the Board pull the motion in a second, and then we can discuss her issue separately if the Board is okay with that. Alderman Astor, I had you making the motion, and Alderman Kinsey seconded it. Unless you want to move forward with the motion as it is. That's an option as well.
Well, I have a question with item 10 myself, and want to understand a few more things to, that's where I'm at with that here.
How are we going to discuss it? Yeah, I was going to offer that as well, Alderman Royal. We could leave it on the agenda and let them make their presentation since they're here to do so. And then if we wanted to not take action on that, that's certainly something the Board could do tonight.
I would, again, like the motion to stand that I made.
Okay, so we have a subsidiary motion. Do we have a second?
I second.
Okay. So, Ms. Attorney, how are we going to handle that?
You would vote on the subsidiary motion?
So the first motion is just off the table?
The first motion would go in the event that the subsidiary motion fails.
Okay. So, Madam Clerk, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Prill, and that is to pull item number 10 and have them come April the 11th and make the presentation. Is that correct, Alderman Royal?
That's correct, sir. Alderman Prill.
Yes.
Alderman Royal.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
No.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Alderman Best.
Yes.
Alderman Brinson.
No.
Mayor Odom.
No. Motion carries. So we are tabling item number 10 until April the 11th. Mr. City Manager, is there any issues with the timing on that? Is that going to put us into?
No, there's no issue with the timing on that.
All right. So item number 10 has been pushed to April the 11th. For the rest of the agenda, do we need to vote on that now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda with the exception of item number 10 that's been tabled to 4/11.
So who?
Second. Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We are now on to the consent agenda. Board, have any questions or comments regarding the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'd make a motion that the consent agenda be approved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second on the consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, we have a roll call, starting with Alderman Royal.
Alderman Royal.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Alderman Best.
Yes.
Alderman Brinson.
Yes.
Alderman Prill.
Yes.
Mayor Odom.
Yes. Okay, item number seven, presentation on Juneteenth. I believe Ms. Talina Massey is going to be making that presentation.
Well, good evening, everyone. I'm back. I am back again, and it is time for Juneteenth. So I am here to give my annual presentation to you all to see where we are this year, how far we've come since I first started doing these presentations, and where effectively you all can be hopefully of some assistance to us this year and many years going forward. So, welcome to Juneteenth in New Bern. We have quite a few people who have been through some of these before, so I'm going to try to make this as quick as possible for you all. But for those of you who are new to this presentation, I usually like to start with where we have been, where we are, and where we plan to be. So, just a little history on Juneteenth. It was founded by four people in our community. Ms. Sharon Bryant, African-American Outreach Coordinator at Tryon Palace, Jamisha Harris, Community Advocate and Entrepreneur, Jesse Barnes, and of course, myself. No? Ah, okay. Just out of this for reference, I'm not going to play it for you all. I'm pretty sure you all got it in your packet or your emails, but very interesting North Carolina Juneteenth history for those who aren't familiar with it. And it also includes one of my very own USCT, Bernard George. So, very interesting presentation. If you don't know about the history of Juneteenth, I included one last year in our presentation, and this is also something, when you guys have the time, please take a look at it. It talks about the significance of this history. Where has Juneteenth been? Juneteenth in New Bern began organizing in the winter of 2017. We had our first event in 2018, and that was with an African-American lecture series at Tryon Palace, and a couple informational events that we had. That was also the year that we got our proclamation signed from the city and also from the county. And it has grown. A lot of you have seen some of these in the past, but just wanted to kind of bring you up to speed. Even during COVID, we were able to celebrate Juneteenth on a smaller scale, but we were able to do a couple events, both in person and virtual, which brought people and tourists from several different locations. But again, that has grown over the years. You take a look at 2021 and 2022, you can obviously see the amount of offerings that we had and how things began to take form and shape. And we went from little fireworks in the parking lot to big fireworks in Henderson Park. And that is always a highlight of our Juneteenth Festival, the celebration that happens on Saturday. Typically, our Juneteenth has grown now from one day to 10 or 11 days, depending on the year. So it is something that everyone can get involved with. If you see this, there's an essay contest, there's artwork, there's socials for young professionals, there's basketball tournaments, there's, we get Divine Nine involved. It is truly a place where all of your hobbies, all of your interests, and all of your pride can come together for the city. So presently, in 2007, North Carolina became the 26th state to recognize Juneteenth as a state holiday, and then we all know in 2021 it became a federal holiday. Since, several North Carolina counties and municipalities have offered Juneteenth as a paid holiday, and I have them all listed there. The city of New Bern currently has a proclamation on record that recognizes Juneteenth as a day of celebration, and it urges all citizens to participate in celebrations and festivities to recognize the significance of that day and to celebrate the achievements of our American brothers and sisters. So New Bern's cultural, artistic, business, media and journalistic, philanthropic, mental health, and educational wellness communities continue to show interest in the planning and execution of future Juneteenth activities, as well as tourists and visitors who come from out of the area. As such, Juneteenth in New Bern has formed valuable partnerships with local entrepreneurs and community stakeholders and property owners to erect the first Juneteenth Fair in the Five Points Neighborhood this year. So we are currently waiting for the Arts Council to let us know that our bear has been delivered, but we will have a Juneteenth Fair in five months. We also are now an official nonprofit. So we went from just a couple people organizing a day to almost over 30 organizations or vendors coming together to form what is now, what was the Juneteenth Committee and Coalition, which is now the Juneteenth Nonprofit. One of the quotes that I also like to remind people who are not familiar with Juneteenth, who may not have come to Juneteenth, that Juneteenth is a celebration, not only a showcase event for African-American communities' positive contributions to American way of life, but it also makes a statement for all Americans that the United States is truly the land of the free. Juneteenth is an expression and extension of American freedom, and like the Fourth of July, a time for all Americans to celebrate our independence, human rights, civil rights, and our freedom. So, why am I here? I always have an ask at the end, you guys know I have an ask at the end. So, with that being said, just looking at how it's grown over time, all of the individual stakeholders that are involved with it now, just the potential that it has to continue to grow. The events that happen during those 10 days happen uptown, downtown, around neighborhoods, online, on Zoom. There's something really, truly for everyone, lawn decoration contests, and it really is a place where a lot of different things come together. So, our community action that we have going forward, the Juneteenth Community Collaborators have partnered with city-sponsored events, like Dove Fest last year, and organizations like Tryon Palace to preserve history, provide a safe space for families to celebrate. We have not had any incidents, thank God, yet, or at all, ever. And also to springboard various business and political ambitions as a tool for community engagement. This year's theme is encouraging economic equality. So it really is, where we have our vendors coming and different people coming together, our volunteers, there is equality all over the place, for everyone to have their share in a bit of the excitement around Juneteenth. What we're asking the city of New Bern is that the city of New Bern government work with Juneteenth organizers and the African-American community to establish another annually celebrated, city-supported event during that weekend closest to June 19th in solidarity of their proclamation directive to participate in celebrations and festivities to recognize the significance of this date as written by our former mayor. The things that we would really like partnership on, and the reason why we're having this ask is for recommended services that are extended to other events around town, such as street closures, portable restrooms, trash collection, and support with our fireworks. We do take the time to raise the money every year or find a way through amazing partners, amazing volunteers, people who give $5, $10, $20, just to be able to help and support. And one of the biggest asks that we have every year is, are you going to have fireworks? So that is, and it is the lion's share of our budget. Our festival every year typically costs about $15,000. $5,000 of that is fireworks. So that is something that we really need assistance with every year, and it's something that really brings the kids out and things like families to come outside, on their porch, come out to Henderson Park and watch the fireworks at the end of the night. So, that is why we have put in that request, or we are asking you to mull over it and really think about it, because between the parade, between the music, between Kids' Corner, between Color Fest, and all of the other activities we have out there, vendors, people who are out there just giving information to people and engaging in the community, it provides opportunities for everyone. And it really is, again, a festival where we're celebrating something tangible, our history. And that's really important to the people in that community. Going beyond 2023, what we are asking as far as community action, and for those who are watching on TV and listening in City Hall, we would like to establish a Juneteenth Board of Directors, compose of past community collaborators, supporters, volunteers, and residents, with the common goal of streamlining the Juneteenth in New Bern festivities, and to work as liaisons between the city of New Bern and ambassadors for surrounding, supporting towns and cities, for annual event coordination, and to grow interest in the history and continued celebration of Juneteenth in New Bern and surrounding areas. So that is what we are asking of the community, is to come together, form a solid organization that can allow capacity and allow this to continue for years to come. We're asking that the city of New Bern consider, in the future, again, mull over considering adopting a resolution to recognize Juneteenth as a paid holiday for city workers to encourage the celebration of freedom and achievements of their fellow Americans, and to join the community in solidarity to make the Juneteenth Festival a city-sponsored event. Anyone have any questions?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
So can you give me a little bit more information? I was really, when I was reading the material, and I saw that y'all was going to get a bear?
Yes.
Okay, that's awesome.
Yes, ma'am.
How, can you, is it going to be like the city bears just around, all around the city?
Yes, it's going to be a part of all the city, because it's a part of the city.
Exactly.
And it's going to have, anyone who donated over $100 last year and to this year's festival, there will be a plaque on the bear that has everyone's name on it. So any organization, any business, or however you want it to appear, is going to be on the, just like we do the Juneteenth t-shirts, where you see everybody's name on the back, we're going to have our bear in a t-shirt with everybody's name on the back on a plaque. So, if anyone's interested, again, here's the contact information. We have a Facebook page, an Instagram, a website, and also an email, juneteethenewbern@gmail, to get in contact with us. We can give you text ID information upon requests, but definitely let us know if you are interested in being on the bear.
Also, I read somewhere too, but I was trying to find it, as of today, it's like 45 states that's already made this a holiday? I read that somewhere, and I was...
Yes, I have a list of counties and cities that have already made this a paid holiday.
But that was what I'm saying, it's 45 states within the United States have already made this a holiday.
This is a federal holiday.
Right, exactly. But they haven't taken the...
Necessary steps.
Necessary steps to make it a paid holiday.
Indeed, indeed. But the list is obviously growing, and we're keeping track of that information. If anybody wants any of those names or those states and counties, we have that information as well. But it is, since it's become a federal holiday, more and more people are coming on board.
Right, exactly.
Much different look than when I first came up here, and we were one of the only cities, the first cities, that were really celebrating it.
Yeah, and thank you for your presentation. This is your, what, third year coming before the Board?
Of course.
And, you know, each year, you know, you give us this information about Juneteenth, and, you know, I just hope that the mayor and this Board, that this year we will make that a city-sponsored event. And Mayor, Board, I'm not asking, we all know that Juneteenth is a week-long celebration, but I'm just asking for Juneteenth to be a city-sponsored event, just for that Saturday that they have the parade. That's all that I'm asking for. I think that it would be a great benefit to this organization to have that support from the city. And like I said, I'm just asking not for the whole seven to 10 days event, just for that Saturday for the parade.
And that was part of my request, just because that festival is where everything culminates. When you think about all of the activities that happened through those 10 days, they all kind of meet at a head at that festival. All those organizations come and they visit, and they have activities and things that are going on. So that whole week of celebration, hopefully you can make it to something that interests you, but we really are pushing and hoping that everyone attends that festival, because that is really where everything throughout that week comes together.
And, you know, if no, there's no other, you know, questions?
Alderman Kinsey wanted to do.
I do want to ask to make a motion on that, if...
Sure. Alderman Kinsey?
How often do you, when do you all start to process a fundraising?
So typically, we have a wrap-up meeting, and we begin talking about who we need to partner with and things like that in August of the year before. So once we wrap up in June, we take July off, and in August, we begin pre-planning about who we need to reach out to. And in January, it goes full force. So we've already gotten sponsorship letters out there and things like that, have been reaching out to people. Craven Community College signed on yesterday. So we do have people who are beginning to sign on as partners and as sponsors of this event. So, yeah, we pretty much, all year, we're ambassadors for it, and we are reminding people that, you know, this is something that happens every year, and we get right on it. But yes, we do start early. We try to.
What is your budget set for this year?
Our budget is a little bit under $15,000. So that's pretty much where we are, and every dime counts, because we are definitely still in the middle of that funding and a little bit further from our goal than we would like to be.
I was just trying to understand, speaking in terms of the things that you need to purchase, and that was the, I was trying to get an understanding on that part there.
Yes, and typically, our city services, the last calculation that we got were about $2,900 when it comes to the barriers, the police officers, and things like that. So that would, again, definitely help us, because that's in there with, again, our festival that day. We've tried to do several things, kind of shorten the hours, because of course, we know it's hot, and we don't have as many officers, because we like to pair them with the Arabian Temple, men and dads from there, so that they're peacekeepers and they walk with the police, so we're showing unification of the community and our law enforcement together. So we're doing as much as we can to ensure that it's safe, but we also, again, need assistance with those things like street closures, the stage, things like that would definitely help us with our budget.
So that's the end kind that you're looking for with the city?
Uh, yes.
Those things that you just...
But, I mean, it's filling your heart to help us with discretionary funds. By all means, again, I reiterate, every dime counts. It really does, because the more that we receive, the more that we can do for the kids, the longer we can have free ICs, the longer we can have the bounce houses set up, the more, the better fireworks display we can have. I mean, we really tried our best to minimalize it at that $5,000 to have a good show, but we could have a great show.
So that means you reach out to more sponsors, to corporate sponsors, right?
Yes, yes. I mean, you know...
Ms. Massey, I do know, last year, Alderman, I mean, Mayor Odom, the city gave to was the fireworks. Am I correct?
I think a few Aldermen participated.
I know I did, I know I did, there's one. And I thought the city participated in some funds directly towards the fireworks. They didn't, uh...
Yeah, the year before that.
It was, okay, I know it was one year that the city, okay, okay, okay. Well, I again will give towards the, some of my funding towards the fireworks as well.
Appreciate it. It is wholeheartedly appreciated.
I was going to, I was going to make a suggestion. So I think the last time that we actually added a city-sponsored event, and we swapped one not too long ago, I think we had a MLK parade, and we swapped it for the Black History Month Parade. The last time we added one was, I think, me and you were the only ones on the Board, it was the George Washington Tour.
Right.
And they came and asked for the specific things that they wanted, because I think this is in an ordinance, so we have to update the ordinance that includes a city-sponsored event, which I know that's not prepared tonight, so we'd have to put that on a future agenda. But my suggestion would be is maybe you and City Manager or Parks and Recreation get together between now and our next meeting, where we would actually approve this on a agenda, and figure out what items it is that we can help spot, what essentially comes with a city-sponsored event. Because I noticed that you had, I think you had restrooms or porta-johns. I don't think we typically do that for city-sponsored events. So there's some things in there, we want to make you aware of what is available...
Okay.
And what's not available, and then that way we can get a firm number, put it on a future agenda for us to actually approve it. Because tonight would just be basically ceremonious to say, yes, we want to move forward with it, but it would actually have to be on ordinance to be updated, because it's listed in our code of ordinance.
Well received.
Well, I thought that we just, last month, there was numerous events, city-sponsored events that was taken off, and we added the Black History Parade.
Yeah, it was in an ordinance. It was in the agenda package with the updated ordinance.
Okay, I got what you're saying, we need an ordinance before us, before we can ask...
It would be like a resolution, for somebody to say, I want to do a resolution tonight, but there's not one prepared for us to actually look at.
Okay, all right, so that sounds, that sounds good. Is that amenable to you, Ms.?
That is perfectly fine. I will come back.
So is there anyone on the Board opposed of having this on the April 11th agenda with an update for it to be considered a city-sponsored event?
No, I appreciate that. I would be hard-pressed to vote tonight without having input from the staff as to what the limits of sponsorship would mean for us. So this gives the staff plenty of time to work with the organizers, and for that information to be passed back to us so that we have a good idea as to what we're voting on.
If we're going to discuss again a city holiday, I saw a list of people that are already recognizing this as a city holiday. I would like to know the number of days that these cities are already offering, so make sure we stay in line. I mean, I think, how many days do we offer a year now? Like 13 and a half, or 13?
Right now, we're currently offering 12 holidays, and we did do a little bit of research. The North Carolina League of Municipalities, which we are a member of, they just released their 2022-23 benefit survey. Holidays were included in that. So what we did look at are cities inside 10,000 all the way up to 99,999. Out of that, let's see here, well, out of all the 167 cities that participated in the survey, there were 48 that observed Juneteenth. And all of the cities and towns that Ms. Massey had in her presentation may not be members, so it may not be an all-accomplishing number that are celebrating that in the state. Out of the cities in size of 10,000 to 900, 10,000 to 24,000, there are approximately 14 that are celebrating Juneteenth, and they have all added a 13th day, because the majority of the cities are at 12, they've all added all but three. Cities the size of 25,000 to 99,999, there are 10 cities that have added a 13th day or more.
Would you make that information available to us also?
We certainly will.
Thank you.
Foster, what, I know your staff's working on preparing the budget for next year, and I see Sonya out there, I'm assuming that's why she's here. Do we have any idea of how much a paid holiday costs us?
Currently, based on what the salaries are, one day costs approximately $136,000.
And that's including benefits?
That's correct.
So I guess one thing we want to keep in mind is if, and I know this all depends on when the holiday lands, so if it lands on the weekend or... on when the holiday lands, so if it lands on the weekend or it lands on a weekday, things would change, but your event is always on the Saturday, correct?
Saturday closest to the nineteenth.
So we would want to consider that if it's a city-sponsored event, which means the employees would be paid for that time off, but if they work that holiday, they would be paid time and a half, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All right.
So, when, when, when staff is going to get, you know, work, get together, work on this or whatever, you're, you're asking to Alderman Aster, because I was going to ask myself for it to be a paid holiday as well?
Am I asking for it to be a paid holiday?
Yes.
No, I was just asking for how many, I see how many people are, are giving it as a paid holiday, but I didn't know how many holidays they were currently receiving.
Okay.
So I was just interested in finding out.
I understand that and City Manager gave us that information, so I would like to have that included as well so that that can be brought forth before the Board on April 11th, along with trying to make it a city-sponsored event, a paid holiday as well if the Board.
Anybody opposed to that? We're not making a decision on it, it's just the information would be available if we did decide to do that.
I just think that it's just another small incentive that we can give our employees. You know, we need to give all the incentives we can to our employees. I just think this would be a, a good incentive and, and it also shows how our city is moving forward, like we've wanted to move forward and it's including all, all people, not just one sector of people, we're all people. I think this would be a first step to what the Fourth of July represents, liberty and the pursuit of happiness, freedom, and that's what Juneteenth is all about, freedom, and I think this will recognize it. I think this is a great idea for us. I hope that all of you would have it within your heart and think, you know, think about it and realize what this incentive gives to our, to our employees and to families and family members as well. So do we need to?
I don't see anybody in opposition of it being on the next agenda unless there's other comments.
I agree.
Definitely.
Okay. Mr. Manager, you have direction.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Massey.
Okay, moving on to item number eight, conduct a public hearing on the rezoning of tax parcel ID eight zero four four zero zero seven. And I believe Ms. Rue is going to make this presentation.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Board. This evening, we are asking your consideration of a citizen-initiated request for a rezoning for a property to be rezoned from C4, which is our neighborhood business zoning district, to C3, which is a commercial zoning district. Our applicant for the request was Billy Poole on behalf of Price &amp; Poole's 2612 investment property. The parcel ID is on the screen and it's also known as thirteen hundred Lowe's Boulevard. This is the east side of Lowe's Boulevard where it intersects with Trent Road. The area encompasses just under seven acres at six point eight three acres and presently, we're going to walk through a couple of pictures. There's several existing structures on those six point eight three acres. Now, you may be familiar with this. This is our frontage that exists on Trent Road. It's kind of a long, narrow piece of property. This is Lowe's Boulevard in the south direction and here is Lowe's Boulevard looking in the north direction. So to look at our existing zoning, which again is our C4 neighborhood district, this is for your, your lower-scale commercial uses that cater to more immediate vicinity neighborhoods. They're designed to protect, not be overly intense uses and protect residential areas that may or may not be around there. And the request is to go to C3, which is a commercial district, which has a handful of more uses which are slightly more intense from a land use perspective. This is established as a district for offices, personal services and retailing as is contained in the definition and on the screen, and they are generally located on roads such as the roads that we're looking at for this request. More specifically, our uses in C4, again, that's our current zoning, are listed here and you will see very clearly that the, those, that list of uses expands as you look at the C3, slightly more commercial area there. So we, when we evaluate a rezoning request, the first thing that we look at is the size of the property. This is six point eight three acres. It's not extremely large. It can be viewed as an expansion of an urbanizing and growing area. That is what the planning board discussed when they made their recommendation to you. The proposed rezoning from C4 to three was found to be consistent with the policy in both the original land use plan and the updates that you all adopted in the 2022 land use plan, which does a little bit of a deeper dive into how we want to grow and how things are urbanizing in the city of New Bern. It was found to be consistent with the character of the adjacent land uses and zoning classifications, and I use the term generally to go back to this screen here. You will note, anytime there's a rezoning request, the first thing we're going to look at is if that same rezoning district is in the area and you can see a great deal of pink on the screen, those are areas that are already zoned, C3 there. There's also a little bit of industrial in the area and about six parcels of residential right across Lowe's. And so they did, we now by law have to discuss whether or not a request is reasonable and in the public interest and consistent. The Planning and Zoning Board at their meeting on February seventh did find Lowe's to be facts and did favorably recommend adoption to you of this rezoning request. There was an opportunity for public comment at that meeting and no citizens spoke for or against the request to change. That concludes the staff report on this.
Board, have questions before we open a public hearing?
Jessica, I don't know whether you would know the answer to this. I know the, the property owner recently demolished one of the structures that was on this site. Do you have any idea whether they intend to come back to the city to rebuild anything on that pad?
So by law, I cannot answer if I am aware if there is an intended use. I do believe that there is an intent to utilize the existing development on that property and not to build new development. If the applicant is here, they are more than welcome to answer that question for you.
Any more questions?
Where are they at?
Okay, well, sure. So if there's no more discussion from the board, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. So if you have anything you want to say for or against, you can come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
And I'm part of here, so.
Okay.
I'm Billy Poole. I'm the manager of the property. Right now, I don't have any plans to rebuild where the cinder block building is. The building was very dilapidated. We had problems with vehicles going into the area, breaking into the building. The roof was falling in, so we just cost-wise said it was probably the best thing to just go ahead and tear it down. We do have a tenant that is interested in the middle building, what, what used to be the Titan Automotive Building, and that's the one we're looking to get rented first and then we'll use funds from that to refurb, refurb the blue building, the one that's at the front road. That is our plan right now.
Okay. Board, have any more questions for the owners?
There, there, there has been a, a fruit vegetable stand on the property. Is that, is that use going to continue?
Yeah, she's planning to stay there. As, as far as I know, she's supposed to be there during the spring when she's come.
Is anyone else from the public that have any comments?
Ladies and gentlemen?
Yes, sir. You can come forward to the microphone. I, I think they're going to hang out if you have any questions that they can try to answer is, is what I intended. Sir, if you could, state your name and address, please.
Regina Davis. I own property on Mansfield Avenue in the South Gate area, right across from there where that vegetable stand is. And my question is, I would like to know how would this rezoning change affect the residence property value and taxes versus the present zoning?
Ms. Rue, I believe that that is a consideration that the Planning and Zoning Board takes up is the valuation, if there's any adverse effect on neighboring properties. Is that one of the questions that the Planning and Zoning Board?
That is something that comes up when you're looking at, possibly your control requests at a, at a Board of Adjustment hearing. I, sir.
Sorry, you, you'll need to come up to the microphone.
And of course, the county is typically responsible for the valuation of the property based on the use on it, not of the zoning classification. That has always been my understanding.
Okay. So, sir, unless someone were to have an appraisal done before and after, there's really no precedence that says it's going to increase or decrease the valuation of your property based off of the rezoning request.
One additional question.
Sure.
Would this rezoning cause an increase in noise level?
Ms. Rue, if you could go back, I think it would be helpful to show the table of permissible uses that show what's going to change or could change.
I'm happy to do that. So here are uses, if you look on the left side of the screen, and I know there's a lot of them and it's a little bit difficult to view, those are the list of things that you can come in and ask for a permit for to do right now. So that is a pretty robust list already. If you look at the list on the right, this expands some things and offers some additional uses where if you were in Appendix A of the city of New Bern Code of Ordinances and you went through and you looked at that use chart, it would tell you whether or not those things were allowable in those districts. Those are summarized for you right here. So I will tell you that most of these uses in both sides are uses that would require a trip to our Development Review Committee and then in some cases even a trip to the Planning and Zoning Review Board to review that site plan. And that is the point in time when all of those negative effects are looked at and attempted to be mitigated as you apply conditions onto those site plans. So depending on what the use may be in the future, and again, we do consider that all of these uses would be allowed that are on the right, not just what the specific plans are that were presented to you today, which is why we always kind of, as staff, shy away from trying to say, well, this is what's going on there for sure because we have to consider all of the uses allowed by the ordinance. Because once that zoning changed, you could come, apply for permits for any of these uses on the right-hand side. That said, noise is something that is always looked at in a review process when it comes in for that major site plan review and also if it was to go through and need a planning board approval. So that is not built into the zoning process. That is built into the development review process, which does occur here and is very clear.
And I, I noticed that Lowe's is I-1 and that is adjacent to the neighborhood that includes Madison Avenue. So I-1 would be a more egregious type zoning than the C3 is.
Yes, Mayor, that is correct.
So from a noise perspective, theoretically, I-1 could be louder, if you will, than a C3 and that, that adjacency butts up against, looks like Monroe Drive and the end of, the other end of Madison Avenue. Okay. Anyone else? Let's, any more questions, sir?
No.
Okay. Is there anyone else from the public? Typically, what we do is allow the, the public to speak, staff answer those questions, and then once we close the public hearing, the board would, would debate then. Is there anyone else from the public that has anything they'd like to say?
There's another gentleman back there.
Yes, sir. Come on, Ernie, come on, come on up to the microphone. I know you're shy when it comes to microphones, but.
I was just curious, you know, I've been right next door to this property.
Yeah, if you could, just give your name and address.
My name's Ernest Williams. I live right, two six oh six Trent Road, right next door to the property we're talking about and, what, what's going to change about this zoning from what it is now?
So, Ms. Rue, if you could go back to the table of permissible uses, you'll see on the screen, on the left-hand side is what could be there now based off the current zoning, and then those last, I don't know, eight or nine items on the right-hand side on the bottom.
Okay, okay, okay.
That, that's what.
You've got a whole list of things.
Yeah, that's what then gets allowed. And again, there's a process they would have to go through for that to happen.
Okay. I was curious of that. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anyone else from the public?
May I, if there's no more, anyone else from the public, I would like to close the public hearing.
Have a motion to close the public hearing. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the public hearing is now closed. So, Board, questions or comments?
I was going to make a comment relevant to the gentleman's question as to the noise. I believe the owner said that you have a potential tenant, correct? And if you would like to do so, you can reveal to him who the tenant is and maybe that would give some level of consolation to know as to how the neighborhood would proceed.
A welder, sir, for the record.
They do, we've been talking to like fabrication, like.
Yeah, we can't hear.
Come to the mic, please.
Light, light fabrication and welding, okay?
General repair.
General repair, okay.
Thank you. I have a question here.
Yes, ma'am.
By looking, Ms. Rue, by looking at this map that you supplied us with here and looking at the South Gate subdivision, none of the properties, the homeowners of properties are facing Lowe's Boulevard, correct? If I'm not mistaken, I think.
I believe you're right.
Yeah, okay, so that's just on the side of them for as property is concerned. Okay. All right, that, that was it. Thank you.
Board, questions or comments?
If I can get this right, if there's no further discussion.
Sure.
I would like to make a motion to adopt a consistency and reasonable statement.
Statement of zoning consistency.
Of zoning consistency. Thank you, Mayor.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second, to adopt a statement of zoning consistency. I'm sure when that does not require a roll call, so we'll do a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Now we're looking to entertain a motion on eight B.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the adoption of an ordinance to rezon tax parcel ID eight dash zero four four dash zero zero seven from C4 Neighborhood Business District to C3 Commercial District.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, to approve the zoning. Any discussion? Hearing none. Let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Aster.
Alderman Aster?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Bass?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Preel?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. All right. Item number nine is consider adopting an ordinance to amend Article Two of the Fire Prevention Code of Chapter Thirty, Fire Prevention and Protection. I believe Fire Marshal Gaskins is going to make this presentation. Congratulations, sir, on your recent promotion.
Thank you, sir. Mayor, members of the board, before you should have the resolution, what we're asking for this evening is newer private rescue has received a request for the property owner thirty-one oh one News Boulevard to install three five-hundred-and-fifty-gallon above-ground fuel storage tanks as part of their daily operations of Maple Cypress Tree Service. According to Section Thirty Forty, Article Two, Fire Prevention Code, Chapter Thirty, the fire prevention, fire prevention, protection of the code ordinances of the city of New Bern, unless amended ordinance, to add this address as an approved district for above-ground stor- storage. We would be taking District eleven, which currently the Pepsi plant is no longer needed as a district, so we will be removing District eleven and replacing it with the new district on News Boulevard. So we wouldn't be adding to the district, we would just be replacing it.
Board have questions?
I'm just curious, the above-ground storage tanks that the company is proposing, are they steel-encased tanks?
Yes, sir. So during the permitting process, we will go through within the actual tank designs, but typically it's a double-lined tank, so it's basically a tank inside of a tank. They would also have vehicle impact protection around it to keep anything from coming in contact with them.
And I would assume that the tank itself is sitting in a concrete containment?
So they're not necessarily inside of a concrete containment, as long as they're the double-lined tanks. So basically, it's a tank inside of a tank, so if the interior tank starts to leak, it's encompassed in another tank that catches the fluid, the same thing. And if something were to hit it, it protects the tank from, the inner tank from being punctured, allows the outer tank to take over.
Okay. And this may seem like a simplistic question, but they're asking for three tanks? Is that for regular unleaded and diesel, or?
Well, my understanding, and we'll find out more about exactly what they're planning during the permitting process, and my understanding is they'll have two off or on-road diesel tanks and then one off-road diesel tank. So it's basically just to refuel their vehicles that are on the yard that they use for the tree trimming service.
Okay.
We have also, we have several of these types of tanks out through the city, is that correct?
Yes, sir. So there's twenty, currently twenty districts that have above-ground fuel storage tanks.
And, um, questions, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion that, uh, capital, Chapter Thirty Fire Prevention and Protection.
Second. I just want to be clear, you wanted to update the Chapter Thirty Fire Prevention and Protection to include this, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Alderman Brinson, you clear with that?
Yes.
Okay. Any more discussion? Hearing none. Let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Kinsey.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Bass?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item number eleven, appointments. Alderman Prill, I believe, do you have one?
Not this evening. I've received six or seven letters of interest or resumes from individuals. I've had a chance to meet with two of them. I'm waiting to hear back from two others, and the other two or three are out of town this week, so it'll probably be next week before I have a chance to sit down and talk with them. So I anticipate that at our next meeting, I'll have a recommendation for that position.
Okay, that was the only one in the package. Did I miss one from anyone else? Okay, move on to item number twelve, Attorney's Report.
Nothing tonight, sir.
Number thirteen, City Manager's Report.
Yes, sir. A couple of things to update you on. We are starting our ward visits this week, so on tomorrow, Wednesday, March twenty ninth, we'll be visiting Ward Five with Alderman Best. On Thursday, March thirtieth, we'll be doing the Ward One visit and Ward Six visit. And then coming up on Monday, March tenth, we'll be doing the Ward Two visit.
April tenth, right.
I'm sorry, yes, April tenth, that's correct. Sorry about that. Also, our work sessions are coming up on Tuesday, May second, and Wednesday, May third, so we will be discussing the budget, and we believe we'll have enough time to allow to where we can take on some additional items. So we'll be reaching out to you on that list of things. We'll also be revisiting some of the things we discussed at the previous meeting as well. Also have an update on the Tisdale House. I spoke with the owner of the property, Dan Tower. He has been doing quite a few interviews with local media over the last few days to talk about his plans. We have received the majority of permits from him. His mover is currently coordinating with DOT on routes and access issues. We're waiting to get a copy of the actual route itself that they're going to be transporting the house, and according to him, we should have a date at some point next week on when they plan on actually moving the house. So we'll give you an update on that as soon as we can. Also, a brief City Hall update, they started installing windows in the annex today, so they started in the, in actually the hallway on the third level. So if you, as you're leaving this evening, if it's still light, you can look out on the main street sidewalk and see what those windows are going to look like. And that's all I have tonight, sir.
Mr. Manager, you say they're going to be moving to Tisdale's house next week?
No, sir. We should know next week when they have the date for that move.
Oh, okay. When they have the date.
That's correct.
They're moving it.
Okay, let's move on to new business. Alderman Brinson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. In going with the precedent of putting things on next agenda, we in the previous boards have heard from bicycle businesses and clubs and citizens to make New Bern more walkable and bikeable. And at our October eleventh Alderman meeting, we approved the twenty twenty-two New Bern Bike and Pedestrian Plan, a very good plan. The first program recommendation of the plan is to form an advisory committee to focus on the implementation of this plan, including prioritization of efforts and studies, projects, and grants. So I'd like to ask, I'm skipping ahead, I would like this plan to be more than something that sits on the shelf, and establishing this committee seems to be the best way to put this plan in motion. So I'm asking for consensus from the board tonight to give staff guidance to draft a resolution for our consideration at the next meeting, basically establishing this committee and developing the details to move forward.
Board have any questions about that? Everyone good with that?
This is in conjunction with the MPO plan, correct?
Well, this is.
Does it have any correlations?
Yes.
Okay.
The MPO helped us, City of New Bern, put together this bike and pedestrian plan, and sort of, of course, they will be, the MPO will be integrated into our efforts. But this is for New Bern's bike and pedestrian plan as a subset to the MPO's plan.
Alderman Bass, the MPO plan included areas outside of the city of New Bern. I think Alderman Brinson obviously just wants to focus on the city.
Right, okay. Because there's included, what, Trent Louis and River Bend and all that.
Yes, yes, but this doesn't.
Okay.
No, I fully support that. In fact, I would expect that we would see a great deal of interest from the community to want to participate on that advisory committee.
Absolutely. Mr. Manager, you good with that?
Yes, sir. Good. Okay. Just two other things, Mr. Mayor. Again, a reminder, tomorrow is National Vietnam Veteran, Vietnam War Veterans Day. It's been fifty years since the last US combat troops departed Vietnam. Our local chapter of the Vietnam Veterans Association will be at Union Park Gazebo tomorrow from ten to four thirty, so please go out, show your support, hear their stories, and welcome those folks home. So last shout-out for that. And then I also would like to announce that a group of businesses have gotten together to form the Uptown New Bern Small Business Alliance, a group focused on small businesses supporting one another. We've talked about this a great deal, and this group decided to get together. The current businesses are Angry Chihuahua Brands, Bites On Board, Jenna's Just In Boutique, Painted Home, the craft studio, The Backyard Bees, and Bear Town Liquidations. So if you're a small business in the Glen Burnie, MLK, Trent Road, and points in-between area, and would like to join, call Tracy at Angry Chihuahua. But if you're like me and want to support these businesses and their alliance, then you can join their Facebook page at Uptown New Bern Small Business Alliance and frequent their businesses. Not to do any advertising for them, but they do have an event coming up on April twenty-second, and I'll direct you to their Facebook page for the details. But we've been talking about focusing more on Uptown, and so these, this group has now challenged us to do that. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Bass?
Yes, Mr. Hughes, I was contacted by a citizen in wanting to know, and I just want to know if it's allowable to put vending machines inside of, he wanted to put a vending machine inside of the Pleasant Hill Community Center. Is it allowable? It was a drink machine or a snack machine, or both?
So I can get with you after and find out who that person is. We can have discussion.
Okay, is it allowable, though? That's all I need to know.
Well, we do have vending machines in several facilities, and so that would actually fall under the purview of Parks and Recreation, but we do have a process, so we'll get with you on that.
Thank you. And then the second thing I have was also, George is not here tonight, but I guess I'll have to direct this to you, City Manager. I was also contacted by a resident that lives on Hillmont Road. In reference to, there is a transformer that's within the ditch line, and it's blocking the water flow, so, and that's at one twenty-five Hillmont Road.
Okay.
If someone can take a look at that, I would appreciate it.
We sure will.
All right. And that's it, sir.
Thank you. Alderman Kinsey?
Yes, Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir.
We spoke earlier this morning about some drainage issues on Plymouth and Colony Drive. Did you get a chance to give anything, confirm that that's one of the projects that they're looking at to work on?
They are planning on working on it. We talked about, we're applying for some grants. I don't know if that's one of the projects that they're going to be working on, but they are looking at the area you just asked about.
Thank you so very much.
Yes, sir.
That's it, sir.
Alderman Astor?
Not tonight, sir.
Alderman Royal?
Not tonight.
Alderman Prill?
I have nothing.
I just wanted to thank City Manager Hughes and Assistant City Manager Marvin Williams and Captain Morrison Brown for Saturday. We made five stops throughout the city, doing a mobile town hall. Mr. Victor Taylor with Vision Ford put it together, and I thought it was very beneficial. Had really good participation to be a Saturday, and a lot of good feedback. And I would say that one of the most interesting and beneficial comments I think that I heard was at the end of it, there were, there were a couple ladies that followed us to several of those stops and not just one. And they talked about how informative it was and how they didn't know so many things, and they had heard other things, and they actually heard straight from city staff about various issues, which was very beneficial. So I wanted to, I wanted to put the bug in ear of staff and the board. I know our New Bern one oh one has been extremely successful. I know it takes a lot of work and time and effort. I would like to see if we could take that to the next step. I love that look I get when I bring things up like this. Is there a way that we could do this and offer these modules online? I understand that you can't go into the police simulator online and you can't get in a bucket truck online, but there's a lot of folks that would like to participate in this and learn more about the city, but they don't have the time that it takes to give that investment on those consecutive weeks. So is there any way that we could maybe look into offering something online for those that can't participate physically?
We could certainly look at offering an abbreviated version of that online to let citizens know what each of our departments are doing and a little bit more about the city. Yes, sir.
And I was actually thinking that they could do it as a on-demand online, but we could also, we're always looking for good content to put on City TV Three, so we could have those playing on City TV Three, so people could get more engaged that way. That's all I had. Do we need a closed session tonight?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Pursuant to Norkhilin Journal Statute one forty-three, three eighteen eleven, A three and A five, A three being to discuss West versus the City of New Bern, and A five to discuss the possible acquisition of real property.
Do we have a motion to go on closed session?
I move.
Have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're in closed session. Any more business coming for the city of New Bern tonight? If not, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move.
Have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.